The cooling that's needed for these buildings is essential. So even on the horizon, if we do get a blast of ice that comes through here, which I doubt, if we did, we're still going to need the HVAC technicians. I mentioned aerospace earlier, but I want to highlight a couple of cross-sector connections to that, mainly autonomous and EV vehicles, and particularly EV planes. So two weeks ago, there were two events held. One in Sugar Land, WISK is a company that is right now doing flight operations for an autonomous drone piloted EV plane that would taxi people from Sugar Land to downtown. Yes, there's no pilot. So they're doing operations right now just to test it out, but it's on the horizon. It's going to happen pretty soon. At the same week, there's a group out of Germany called Lilium that did a similar test flight out in the Bay Area for an EV plane. So in both cases, we're talking about the need for technicians around the actual maintenance of the planes, but then also key and essential. The next one that we're tracking is the hydrogen energy. We received a $4.2 billion grant in this region to expand hydrogen refining across the region, primarily focused on the east side of town, Baytown, and just adjacent to that. There's obviously going to be a need for process techs, instrument techs, and engineers and electricians. So we believe that that's a space for us to fill. The other part on that is refrigerated cargo movers, because the hydrogen has to be moved in a refrigerated capacity. So looking at, again, the HVAC techs, but also the ones that are going to be moving the vehicles. I discussed the spaceport earlier, and certainly more will be coming out of this as Ellington gets further built out. But the key, I think, around all of that is that STEM careers, whatever the STEM careers that are associated, are going to be essential for us, both on our academic side and transfer students into our technician side. And then lastly, I would highlight the increase in biotech and life sciences. Our leaders in our region, the chambers, are aggressively seeking to bring companies here in this sector. Biomanufacturing, research firms, and technology are driving healthcare innovations in our Right now, the Texas Medical, I mentioned Helix Park, so 37 acres of a mixed-use space is being built in the Med Center specifically targeting biotech and life sciences, and it's within a stone's throw of Coleman College. So there's obviously an opportunity there for that. So this brings me to our labor market and its current state, and this hasn't really changed, it's only increased. 10 years ago, when I was working at the Greater Houston Partnership, it was at 42%. It's now 10% higher. And it's 52% of the jobs in our market require more than a high school diploma, but less than a four-year degree. So that's what we do, right? In addition to two bachelor's degrees. But this is what we do, so we know that this is only going to increase. If you think about that, that translates to 1.75 million jobs in our region, and we can definitely put them out there. To remain competitive, we have to have the programming in place now that will help meet the demand in the future. The other point I want to make is that we're looking strategically at where our programs are located geographically. So for example, our automotive programs are located at 45 North in our North Forest Campus. And I would argue that if you live near the Katy Campus or Stafford Campus, you probably aren't going to be willing to make that 45, 50-minute trek to those campuses. What that also means is that folks in those areas that have local dealerships next to them need facilities that can train them to work in the jobs next to their houses. I'm sure that that's a need out in that area, and we can fulfill it. Another example would be our healthcare programming. We could probably put five Coleman Towers around this whole service area, and it still wouldn't be enough to fill the capacity of the jobs needed in this region. We've got to think strategically about where we're going to place additional programming for healthcare that makes sense. It might even be that we end up putting a program inside a hospital where we partner with the hospital, do the clinicals onsite and the training onsite. There are enough hospital systems outside of the Med Center that we could do that pretty effectively. I would add, on the healthcare side, we saw how fast this building filled up. And so not only is there demand in the industry, there's student demand for these jobs. As we look at our programming and facilities, I just want to add that HCC has done this type of work before. The top-left corner there is the Northline Mall campus when it started. My wife took her first classes at this college campus. You go over the Northline now, you've got two beautiful buildings and an early college at the same location, not in a mall anymore. On the right, we've got the old Katy Building that has literally paved the way to the new Katy Campus that is now at capacity. The city of Houston, they've now turned it over to us, and we're doing the full operation there. And the one on the left is a lab that we operate at Gallery Furniture. Trustee Wilson, I know you've seen this lab. We're offering classes just about anywhere we can, and that's an easy way to do it. I would say that, and I butchered this metaphor or this idiom several times, so I'm probably going to do it again, but the thing about how do you eat an elephant? One bite at a time. I think I got it right that time, so that's good. And that's what happened in all these situations, and they effectively were able to set up new shops. And of course, we have the one in the center here is our San Jack Building, which was a high school before it became a world-class college campus. So the other consideration that we have as we're looking through this is we know that this is something that we have to meet moving forward. The Commissioner might have moved on, but this plan is not moving on. We've got to set up pathways in our programming that stack on each other that lead to additional credentials that students are picking up. It's part of the vitality of our success, and it's going to be key to moving forward. So just to restate, these are the considerations that we've taken on as we're looking at different ways to make things happen. I know you have this in front of you, so I won't go over those, but that's definitely what the group came to deciding on what we needed to move forward with. This is a rough chart or table of what some of the colleges are looking at doing in terms of spaces that are needed based on some of these considerations. I can tell you, I've already had colleges that are interested in adding additional ideas to this list, such as the Logistics Simulation Lab at Southeast. There's plenty of ideas that are still needing to be generated, but this is the initial steps that we've taken there. So how do we get there? I think there's several ways that we're going to do that. First of all, we're going to be seeking out philanthropic dollars from private donors and companies. We're going to utilize specific state and national grant programs, such as the New Market Tax Credit or similar EDA grants. We'll look at public-private partnerships, none unlike I just mentioned about the hospital systems. And we'll ask for industry to engage specifically. I was telling somebody last week, I had the opportunity in the last three weeks to travel, to tour the Star of Hope, which just built a new building, the Houston Area Women's Center, which is building a new building right now, and Covenant House, which is building a new building right now. All of those are nonprofits, and they found a way to generate the dollars they need to build those buildings. So we're seeking to do the same. I'm going to turn it over to Bob now, and he's going to tell you the how to get there, I think.
Thank you. Good evening. So Dr. Webster talked a lot about why this is so important and the types of things that we're looking at. We know that we need to make these changes to be competitive, but we also know that we have some internal challenges. This board has approved a lot of money to address deferred maintenance, as an example. And so what we need to do is be able to integrate the ideas with the data, with the reality that we face today. And so what I'm going to lay out very briefly is a little bit of that process. So first, we have to really take these ideas and run them through the filter of looking at the jobs data, the employment data, and the data from RADS, and don't ask me what that abbreviation is, but it's Dr. Burridge's department. And we have to run it through to make sure that what we build and what we create is something that's needed both by the industry and by our students, because it has to benefit our students, and it has to benefit the community, and it has to be something that we can sustainably do. And we have to take a realistic look at our building and determine, is this the right place today to continue to do this program if we are in a building that's not suiting its purpose, or do we need to move the program? Or in some cases, do we need to change the facility? And do we need to look at those facilities and determine that some of these facilities we may no longer need, and they can be declared surplus? But all of that involves a cost-benefit analysis, and we have to make sure that it connects to not today's need, but the need in the future, because all of this, it takes time to execute. The Chancellor gave us some parameters. No to any facilities that don't serve students and don't generate revenue. They have to be sustainable. And no to facilities that aren't aligned with their mission and vision. And no to just simply duplicating existing services across the system where we end up with too many that don't have the scale to operate effectively without doing an industry needs assessment to make sure that they can be filled. Another way to look at this is that programmatic needs are at the center, but we have to integrate all of these other things with that as we're making these decisions. What does the industry need? Does it align with our mission? Does it align with our COEs? Is it sustainable? Is there an economic model that will work for this? What's the impact on the student experience? While we know that students increasingly are taking classes online, there's a reason to be on campus, and we need to give students a reason to be on campus, and we need to make that an enjoyable experience for them that's meaningful and where they can learn. Do we really have partner and community support to support these efforts? If I ask everybody in this room, would you like a larger home with lower taxes? Everybody would say yes. If I ask you, are you willing to pay for it? They may not, right? The answers change. And so while the idea is we need to know that we have the real partner and real community support that can help us with this, we need to look at our facility conditions and the suitability for the use. And to the extent possible, we want multiple-use facilities. We don't want to paint ourselves into a corner where it's a single use, and that use changes over the time. I can't imagine 15 years ago, we were thinking about even considering getting in a drone in Sugar Land and flying without a pilot to the office. I mean, that's just not something anybody considered, at least I didn't. And then there's a long-term impact on maintenance and operations costs. So another way to look at this is keep in mind that it's the presidents who are really driving this. And so the presidents did the ideating phase one, and now they're going to work with Research, Analytics, and Decision Support, RADS, and Instructional Services to analyze the programmatic and facility needs, make sure we have the demand, and then we want to bring that back to you and get your feedback and discussion. And then we want to really start building out some plans. What does that look like specifically? What do you do with this room or this building or this space? And then bring that back to you again. And then get your approval to move forward at that point, where then we really start working primarily through the presidents to work with the external community to generate what we need to do to make those things happen. I'm a little more visual. So the hollow circles are the words across the top, and the solid circles are the words across the bottom. But basically, this is just kind of laying it out with a rough timeline. We are at the Phase One at the bottom-left, and right now, we are doing the presentation to the trustees, so we've made it to Step Two. And then, as you kind of progress through, you see that we're bringing this back kind of along the way with the goal that by spring of '25, we're really talking about launching some partnership campaigns to hopefully start construction of whatever needs to be done in 2026. Thank you. And questions, comments, and observations? I will just say that the feedback from the trustees is really important as we go through with this, because what we don't want to do is march down a road to find out that's the wrong road.
So first, thank you, Dr. Webster, for the presentation. I'm incredibly energized by this topic and very excited to be able to talk about it today. Also, I want to thank you all for carving out so much time in your schedule for trustee feedback. I agree, it's going to be 100% essential to make sure that when we make progress, we can build upon that progress versus getting a bunch of work done and then having to recycle and everybody getting frustrated. So thank you for anticipating that need in advance. Wanted to highlight two comments. First is really appreciated, and much of my prior feedback is visible in this list, so thank you for it, the view of the emerging economic opportunities in the city. I think one that I just want to highlight is to also be thinking about battery recycling. Texas is installing more grid-scale batteries than California. We know how to build here in Texas. And that fleet of batteries will become a clear and present need, not only from a manufacturing standpoint, but also from a recycling standpoint, as I believe that after five or so years, their efficacy starts to degrade pretty significantly. So I think that's an emerging need that maybe even industry doesn't have their eye on yet. So incorporating that in some of our early planning, I think, would be valuable, because I think there's going to be a huge market demand for that before too much longer. The second item is, as you begin these first steps down your pathway, just be working with the end in mind. As an engineer, one thing that I think would be really helpful for us as we trundle toward making a decision is having some very clear kind of decision criteria laid out and developed along the process. And it would be kind of amazing to see, at the end of the day, a Pareto of the cost of an opportunity, be it capital or ongoing operating expenses, with the enrollment benefit, the student outcome benefit, the financial benefit to the institution, so that we can see where do we get the most bang for our buck? And then also compare it to other opportunities that we have, be it tuition assistance or IT systems, infrastructure that we could deploy, and really make an informed decision about where do we need to invest our money, be it in supports or software or new programs, et cetera, and kind of start paying forward this drive to peer-leading performance by the end of the decade. So making that very transparent and having an aligned or consistent set of decision metrics from the beginning that we can build on, engagement to engagement, I think, would be really, really helpful. So it's less of a question, more of a comment, but if they have any commentary on all that, I'll hand it back to you.
Thank you.
Thank you for the presentation. I have a few questions, because something that I'm not seeing here is what is the analysis of transportation, the current transportation systems in Houston? For instance, we have, what, six major highway systems where we see every morning, and one in particular, over a million cars every day, every morning. What is that transportation network currently looking like? Where are these people going to work? Where are they headed? Number two. What I liked about number five, the key sectors driving the economy. We know that petrochemical refinering is on the outskirts of our city. We also know there is no public transportation along the outskirts of our city. So how is that going to affect how we train and where these people will live or not live? Public transportation is very, very important to the city of Houston, and we are behind other cities in terms of people moving. We seem to be, we love our cars. That's the answer to that. We love our cars, but mass transportation has to become a very critical factor, and we don't really know where Metro is on that and what their plans are for mass transportation. We've done a fundamental rail transportation, and it is extremely fundamental, but are they planning to expand that so that more people can get out of their cars, onto public transportation, and into the city to work? The logistics for rail, maritime, and trucking, the intermodal system is king in this region. You start out ocean-wise, you come through Galveston Bay, you come up the back door behind Dow Chemical, and the rail system takes over from water, and then trucking takes over from rail. So the intermodal system, in terms of logistics, is going to impact us significantly. What does that look like for us? We know that CDL is a booming education business for us. It's a booming training business for us. So what is that going to look like in terms of what the intermodal systems are now doing? Because they rule the nation, actually, and we are the significant factor in the center of the country. Healthcare, two miles from Reed Road at 288 South, two miles north, is the medical center. The public transportation system is set up to move people into the main hub for medical, which is the Texas Medical Center. What are we going to do with that? If people are moving a million cars a day up 288 headed to the medical center into downtown, are we taking advantage of those people moving in and out of the city in terms of them being educated either on their way to work or on their way from work? We know that most communities beyond our immediate Houston borders do not have public transportation, so you must drive. That is not an option. But in the city of Houston, the public transportation system is set up such that people don't necessarily have to drive to get to work, at least to get to downtown and to the medical center. I like the technology and business services, and I think we're going to have to expand it. West Loop Campus has an extraordinary set of programming that will see that boom immediately. We don't really advertise that, but it is extraordinary in that most companies need everything that we have to offer in terms of our three levels of credentials of value for those technology and business services classes. I want to say you all have done an exceptional job in manufacturing and construction, in particular, construction. The credentials of value allow people to have certifications in these three areas, and these three areas are the boom of Houston, the boom of Harris County. So I think that having evenings, I think that you all have been talking about having evenings and weekend classes to make it convenient for people who work full-time. And we saw the relationship of that when we put healthcare in this building evenings and weekends and had almost 500 people to sign up. So we know that there is a need for evenings and weekends, and it has to be where the people are either coming from or make it convenient for. And we know that it's convenient with the rail system. We know that it's convenient to be in midtown near Third Ward. We know it's convenient in terms of being in a close proximity to the medical center, especially Coleman. So I really appreciate having this particular slide, Slide Number Five, because it lets us know what we will have to do. I can concur that people in one part of the city are not going to drive 23, 25 miles to a class, because they won't do it from District Nine to Northwest. It's not going to happen. So how are you going to service people along the Beltway Eight South Quarter? It's not a discussion in here, and it needs to be. I want to say also that as far as the data analytics, I think we're going to have to look at our transportation networks of the city, as well as where businesses and industry are choosing to be. We see a couple of major corporations leaving California and coming here now, and they're coming downtown. I would not have expected that, but they are. And so that's a major move for, what, 500, 600 people that are going to move with each of those corporations. So what is downtown going to look like, and how is this facility going to impact educational change? Because I think, if I'm not mistaken, University of Houston downtown is on the far edge, but it does not offer some of the courses that we offer. So this is an excellent presentation. If you all would find out whatever Metro is doing, it would be good to know, because they do have the data to tell you the movement, what the movement is, and to discuss for us how we're going to accommodate people who are moving into the projects. And thank you for going to Star of Hope. There are nearly 500 families and 400 men, and we have had the rare opportunity, and I have to thank Ashley Smith for that, for opening that door at the board level and moving us into the building, because those people can only live there one year, and none of them are educated. So having our credentials of value, which are three credentials you can get in less than a year, this is a huge move for those people to be able to be educated quickly and move into industry. So you all have done a great job, and thank you so much for this. This is really great.
I've seen this presentation before. You know, you talk about cost-benefit and scale, and you talk about excess properties and what we go into in the planning. We have done this. I just brought half of my long-term studies that I've seen here at the college before. And I think there was a good effort in, let's talk about healthcare. We've got a nine-story building that's not full, so we don't need a facility there. And we talk about scale. We built some schools that maybe we didn't get the number of students we expected, like the one in Missouri City. It didn't, we don't have any more students at the campus there now than we did at the one at Siena. And I'm not sure what the numbers are at Felix Froggus Campus. There's just some, you know, it was the philosophy of build it and they'll come, and we've built it and they haven't come in some of these locations. And we have some excess properties, like you talk about, that we need to liquidate. And we bought properties we shouldn't have bought, but because of the real estate in Houston, we've not been hurt very bad about making those bad real estate deals, because everything's gone up. I'm real reluctant to go into any building program with what's happened with online colleges, number one, and what's happened with the amount of excess space we've got all over this district. I would like to make sure that we plan to fill up what we got before we look at building one brick and one piece of mortar for something new. If we could incorporate some deferred maintenance into some of that to make it happen, that would be good. And of those six categories, the petro, the port, healthcare, technology, aerospace, and manufacturing, where are the jobs? Is healthcare the main employer that we, as a community college, could fill that need? You know, aerospace, to me, we can only fill that need by being a two-year college for someone to transfer to a four-year to get their masters and become a rocket scientist. We're not, our curriculum doesn't match the aerospace in my mind, other than what I said about the two years. And the port, the port's real important, but how many jobs can we train for the port compared to how many jobs can compared to how many jobs can we train for healthcare? You know, I'm thinking that healthcare is a crown jewel that we need to, uh, put our 100% of our efforts into and see if we can make something out of that and fill up that nine-story building that we've got and, um, move in the direction of what, what works for our community. You know, I, I realize the, the demographics change and people move and, uh, you once needed a school here and people have moved out of that area and they're over here. So you need, I understand that well. I, back when I moved to Houston, they were, they had those portable buildings and that's how they handled it. They'd move a portable building from here to over here where they needed it. And that was a real efficient way of handling the demographic move. But, you know, the demographics of what's happening and predicting what's going to happen in the future is, is kind of like predicting whether the stock market's topped out or whether it's at the bottom. You know, it's predicting a high and a, uh, is, is a risky business because I've done that before and lost plenty of money trying to do in that. But my point is we need to utilize the facilities we've got. We do need a plan, but we still, we're still paying off about half the bonds from, from 2012, 13. And we need to max those facilities out. And that's all I've got. Madam Chair.
Um, I have a question. Maybe I missed something. Trustee Wilson was saying about building new buildings, but I was under the impression that you guys were also talking, talking about utilizing what we currently have, evaluating what we currently, using what we currently have as opposed to building new buildings. So taking the opportunity to possibly train, um, in hospitals and, I mean, teach and train, utilize some of that space. If, if I'm incorrect, let me know.
No, I mean, you're exactly right. So we are really focusing in on the programmatic side and based on that, what are the facilities needs we have? It might be a case where we don't build something. Uh, for example, uh, the ISDs at their CTE centers, they don't use those at night. So could we put an automotive program in a school district in their facility? We absolutely could. Is there an opportunity for us to partner with a restaurant to provide training onsite at places for, you know, just basic skills? Yes, we could do that. I think what we're trying to do is see what are the programmatic needs we have across the system to keep us both competitive right now and then looking forward to the future, what are the things that need to happen and, and to keep us abreast of the, the changing market? Um, I, you know, I've, I've said automotive a few times, but if you think about it, our, our partner, community colleges in the region that are right around that area could easily put up a facility pretty quickly and we would be marketed out of that area. I'd rather not see us do that. I'd rather see us succeed and, and partner with the right partner to make it happen.
And also too, in regards to what Trustee Vandiball-Stahlwerth was making reference to, how are you going to educate those people who are not in an area that has public transportation? I think, um, one of your considerations for filling gaps in service areas across the system is making reference to that, if I'm not mistaken. Because that would put programs in areas that are not currently utilized in certain areas, but are in other areas. Like in Missouri City, you know, there's definitely not mass, well, public transportation, you know, may have Fort Ben bus, but that's just right around in that little city. So, uh, but there are programs that need to be in that area and we need to market them better so that we can bring in students because, um, excuse, as you stated, no, uh, one from Fort Ben will want to travel away to northeast for a program or the automotive program because of the time it takes to get there, 45 minutes or more. So, um, like I say, I think that that consideration would fulfill, uh, that transportation need.
Yeah, one of the things I've seen too is the, um, you know, talking about Metro specifically, where bus, uh, uh, organizations have created their, you know, park and ride, um, facilities and in the bottom floor, a community college has come in and set up shop in the parking ride. Um, you know, there might be a restaurant and whatever else in that parking ride. So I think there are some opportunities there that, that we can partner with, with somebody like Metro to make things like that happen. And they're doing some of those buildings right now.
Okay. Trustee Vandiball-Stahlwerth.
You're absolutely right. Um, the lady Elfranco Lee had established a, a focus and a pathway to actually put a park and ride at South Campus. That was his intent before he died. And when he died, that stopped. So you're right, because all of those people coming up 288 South are not necessarily wanting to pay all this money to park and move into the gridlock of the region around downtown. Uh, but that, that entire focus ceased to exist when he passed away. So you're very correct in that Metro has the opportunity to establish, it only takes what, one or two acres at best, a city block at best, to set up a park and ride that allows people to not have to deal with the gridlock. But it also puts them at the campus so when they finish their day or just before they start their day, they can be educated and then move on, uh, through public transportation. So yes, that, that was once upon a time. That was an idea. That was actually a focus.
Um, you know, I'm not advocating for any new buildings. At all. Okay. The, like what the chair just said about, um, how much, um, what is the benefit of putting a automotive center in the Southwest because somebody can't, uh, drive to the northeast compared to what's the benefit to putting an aerospace program or a healthcare program? And, you know, how many people would healthcare cater to and how many people would fill those needs compared to the automotive or vice versa? And see, it's a numbers game to me. If there's 10,000 people that want automotive and two people that want healthcare, automotive wins. It's those type of decisions and analysis that need to be made on how we allocate our money as to what best serves the community and we, where we can get the most bang for a buck. And those are not, those are not simple analysis to make and a lot of it is guess. And sometimes like we've made those guesses in the past and those guesses have been wrong. So this is a real, you know, monumental task in trying to do it. You know, we need to, we don't need to sit here and let time pass us by. I'm not advocating for that at all, but it's, it's not an easy process. And, and just in my closing, quite frequently what happens is I've heard that politics gets involved in where things are decided rather than facts and figures and numbers. I know that comes as a shock to a lot of people, but you know, we need to stay out of that. We need to just look at the numbers and see what it is and do what's right for the community.
Well, you're right. It's absolutely a challenge and, and step two, I'm sorry, step two on this process is really where you should expect us to bring you that data so that you have some data to make decisions and, and inform decisions about. Um, and so that's our challenge between now and the time we meet again is to, to generate that kind of information. And we'll certainly incorporate the piece around, um, where people are and where people are going, right, into that. I'm, I'm sure that we have that data in some form and, and we should be able to figure out what Metro knows or doesn't know and incorporate that.
Madam Chair. I think both of the, both of the, the industries that you're mentioning are both important. I understand how important intermodal systems is. There is a customs weigh station in Bay City, Texas. What, what are the odds that a customs weigh station would be in Bay City, Texas? Because intermodal has become that important. And so moving all of those goods through that, through that corridor was the best option. And so that those three small cities, Bay City and Palacios and, and Madagorda County have boomed. I would say that Harris County understands what it needs. Metro has done their, their research. They understand what they need. We are sitting on the education piece. We understand what we need. Uh, all we're missing is to have all of those things put in one place. I wanted to ask a question, but I, I know the answer because I looked at the team and I wanted to ask the team, how many of you ride public transportation? None. So you don't know. You don't, you don't have an idea of how convenient it can or cannot be because you do not do it and you do not have to. But it's an issue. There, there are advisory boards that have, have let our public transportation know what's going on. There are, Harris County does have the data. Workforce Solutions has the data for what the industries are and what directions they're going in. We don't have to reinvent those wheels. What we need to do is open our silo doors and let those wheels roll in. And that way we have a more balanced look on what we can and cannot do or what we should and should not do. We have a lot of buildings. We have a lot of property that we may not necessarily have to use or we may, we have property that's unusable. We understand that. But what's most important is a collaborative effort from education, business, industry, governmental infrastructure. And unfortunately, let's put politics about that big day because if it's any bigger, it's going to be a nightmare. Um, so that we understand how we're going to move collectively and how we're going to meet the needs based on what business and industry, what Metro, what Harris County, what, uh, the intermodal systems, what the Port of Houston needs. We are the key. I don't think anybody realizes how powerful and how valuable community college is in turning on a dime and educating hundreds of thousands of people within a year. And these credentials of value will prove that. So I'd like to see us ask them to give us their assessments because they've already made them. That's why they know what they're going to do 10 years from now. And let's see how it fits into our, our RADS because we do have the best data analytics person in the state, as long as nobody steals her. So that we know what we will do to accommodate and that we will be the community college of choice in this, in the Houston region. That's really my focus and I'm, I'm glad that this is a, these steps are good steps. So let's find out what these others are doing so that whatever steps we make are not missteps. And Dave, I know what you're talking about because I clean my office and I found two of those. So the facilities 2011 to 2035, I have that one. And then the 2019 one, I have that one. Then it was the 2022 one. I, yeah. So, but if you read them, none of them talk to each other. So let's figure out how to do it, utilizing all of the other, uh, industry or all of the other focuses, governmental focuses, um, and even business and industry. And we, I think that you all have, I think you all have the most wisdom in terms of how to do it. Because the others are somewhat limited in how they can do it, but we are now. And so I'd like to see that happen. This is going to be very exciting. Thank you.
One question, kind of building on the, the theme that Trustee Vandiball-Stahlwerth was talking through. I know implicit in this is active engagement with the business community and our student community, both current and prospective. I'm curious if you could make it explicit for us about how are you planning to weave that through this full calendar? And in particular, uh, keen to hear if you'll be able to make or, uh, have some of those engagements and incorporate initial feedback into that next work product that you've planned to bring back to the board for discussion.
Well, we'll, we'll engage the advisory boards for sure, as, as the chancellor had mentioned earlier. But there's also opportunities for us to partner with our chambers locally. Um, I'm reminded of the two recent failed site selections for the biotech industry based on talent, uh, local talent and local training available here. So we know from the, the chamber side, when they're reaching out about site selection, immediately what industries we have to connect into, but we're, we're definitely connected in with all the chambers.
Any other questions or comments? Chancellor.
Yeah, I thank you very much. Excellent presentation. I would like to thank the board for the feedback, uh, for your guidance to us and how we would want to move forward with your recommendations, taking into account everything that you have mentioned, the enthusiasm, the excitement among the members of the team when this was discussed as a proposed move forward as we become even more competitive. Everyone was, I mean, it was palpable. It was so exciting to the members of the team because while there were others who had engaged in going out and making these initiatives real, nonetheless, the staff members didn't have very much input. And so now they feel as though they have that advantage. I would like to say that I was at a meeting last week and there was reference made to the $280 million grant that came from Bloomberg for the, um, All Dean Independent School District. That was a grant. And then at a meeting on yesterday, there was reference made to Memorial Hermann Health Systems now making provisions for a space where all of the students would be taught. They would move from the CTE through to an associate's degree. And I know HCC has been partnering with the, with the group in order to make sure that the students could have access to our programs as well. But all of the technology is going to be funded by Memorial Hermann and they were the ones who decided that they were going to partner with the All Dean Independent School District in order to develop the grant and submit it to Bloomberg. I think there are some opportunities available to us. Certainly there is a demand for it and with your approval to move forward and at least to investigate what the possibilities are, we certainly can take into account all of what you have suggested in terms of potential partners, making sure that we can utilize the facilities that we currently have. We have discussed that. We have one facility now that we're going to be bringing back to the board in request that this be added to the Surf House property list because we have the opportunity to bring our police department, the command staff to this location. We have deployed all of the officers to the college campuses to provide that security for the members of the team who will be going there. So the current facility that is on Caroline is one that we will be bringing back to you. And so we'll be looking at our facilities as well and bringing that information back to you as you consider that, uh, for a final decision on how we move forward.
Yeah, so that, that, is this like part one of community policing? Is that where we're headed with this?
Well, we haven't discussed that in full. What we do know though, is that they will be directly onsite at the campuses. The offices are already there. They're already there. And so the command staff will be coming here.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? Again, guys, thank you for being so patient. Appreciate it. Okay, the special meeting is adjourned at?
Sorry. 4:12 PM.
Five minutes before the next meeting starts.
Good afternoon. This regular meeting will now come to order on October 16th, 2024 at?
4:35 PM.
This meeting was called for the purpose as listed on the duly posted meeting notice. Let us keep in our thoughts and prayers all those who are recovering from Hurricane Helen and Milton. We also want to remember the family of Judge Zanetta Bernie, who passed on September 22nd, 2024, as well as my family in the passing of my Uncle Thomas Ford. At this time, please, John, join me for prayer led by Dr. Vandal Stalwart, followed by the pledge.
When Almighty God, who watches over us, who keeps us, who makes His face to shine upon us and gives us peace, we ask for the anointing of wisdom so that this governance table can make the decisions that are the best decisions for His people. We thank you, oh God, for bringing us here safely. We thank you for giving us the capacity to execute our jobs effectively. And we praise you for the peace that we receive when we finish this day and go home. We ask, Father, for those who have not made it, that they will make it here safely. For those who leave here, they will leave here and go home safely. And we especially ask, God, that every decision we make is under your anointing and with your approval, in the name of Jesus. Amen.
To the life of the ancestors of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag and pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one
Are now ready to approve the minutes from the Academic and Student Affairs Audit, Board Governance Committee and Committee of the Whole, External Relations, Marketing and Special Meetings on September 4th, 2024, and Regular and Special Meeting on September 18th, 2024. Is there a motion to approve the minutes for September 2024?
So moved.
Second.
It has been moved. And second, are there any corrections to the minutes?
It's the Ratch University Georgia Brown School.
Okay. Well, how do we make that correction? You got it, Sharon.
We'll make it before posting the final.
Okay, thank you. Okay, all right. Okay, we are now ready to vote on the approval of the minutes for September 2024.
Trustee Johnson?
Can you see me?
Yes.
That's amazing.
Voting has concluded. The motion passed unanimously with a vote of seven to zero.
We will now move to our awards, presentations, and recognitions. Todd, the planters will introduce the awards, presentations, and recognitions.
Good afternoon. At this time, we'd like to invite members of the Truist Charitable Fund, Dr. Maya Dernovo, Associate Vice Chancellor, Entrepreneurial Initiatives, Will Horton, and HCC Foundation President Karen Schmidt, to join the trustees and chancellor in front of the dais for a check presentation by the Truist Charitable Fund. Truist is committed to helping underserved businesses grow through their contributions We want to thank, express our sincere gratitude to the Truist Charitable Fund for your generous contribution. Trustees and chancellor, you may now return to the dais. And at this time, we welcome to the podium Karen Schmidt and Bill Toomey for comments.
Thank you very, very much. Board Chair Linton Gary, Chancellor Ford Fisher, and trustees. I am honored to have the opportunity as HCC Foundation President to thank Truist Charitable Fund for its support of Houston Community College. Truist is committed to helping underserved businesses grow and flourish, and their gift of $100,000 has so far enabled 165 small businesses to participate in programs including a Small Business Success Series, a Business Leadership Series, two Empowered CEO Sessions, and an Academia Esperanza Par Latino session. All of this is available at no cost to the small business owners and members. We are so grateful to Dr. Maya Dernovo, Associate Vice Chancellor for Entrepreneurship, who has been a continual advocate for entrepreneurial initiatives at Houston Community College. I would now like to turn the podium over to Kay Chambers, Financial Inclusion Leader, Houston and Central Texas Market for Truist, for remarks. Thank you very much, Kay.
Thank you so much. Once again, it is such an honor for us to be here on behalf of Truist. Our mission in the community, as is yours, aligns. We're here to help. Entrepreneurs face a lot of challenges. When I woke up this morning and I saw how windy it was, I thought about how that wind could create a headwind for these small business owners, and it made me feel so proud that Truist has the opportunity to partner with you, to meet people where they are at the beginning of their entrepreneurial journey, and to help fund them, to help give them ideas and the information that they need to thrive. So we thank you so much. We look forward to a continued partnership, and we appreciate the time.
And we just want to say, I just want to say, on behalf of the board, that we thank you ladies. We thank your company for what they do to help small businesses and for partnering with HCC.
And thank you again to Truist Charitable Fund for your donation. And Madam Chair, this concludes the awards, presentations, and recognitions.
Thank you, Todd. We will now open the floor for trustees to provide information regarding activities in their prospective districts, an overview from conferences or workshops attended, and to recognize individuals for outstanding contribution in the community that promotes education and community service. We ask trustees to limit their comments to no more than two minutes. The following meetings are scheduled for November. November 6th, the board will have the committee meetings. November 6th, the committee of the whole meeting will be at 4:00 PM. November 20th, the regular meeting will be at 4:00 PM. The meetings will be held at the HCC Administration building, 3100 Main Street, and will be posted according to the Open Meetings Act requirements. We would like to express happy birthday wishes to trustee Johnson. We can't see you. A happy birthday to trustee Johnson.
Birthday, you know.
She celebrated her birthday on October 7th. Trustee Davies will celebrate a birthday on October 22nd, so happy birthday in advance. And Dr. Adriana Tomás will celebrate her birthday, October 25th. We wish each of you a wonderful and blissful birthday celebration, and may you be blessed with many more. This concludes the chair's report. We will now hear from Dr. Ford Fisher with the chancellor's report.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair, members of the board. I'm pleased to provide another positive enrollment update. With fall enrollment ongoing, HCC is up 6.9% in our credit enrollment and 7.1% overall. Additionally, our funded continuing education enrollment is up 25%. This academic year contains students earning short-term credentials like occupational skills awards and many of our apprenticeships. Like credit enrollment, HCC's CEU, Continuing Education Units enrollment, has already surpassed that of fall 2023 with enrollment ongoing. We have implemented this semester Commit to Complete. With our Commit to Complete at HCC, we anticipate that our enrollment will continue to result in student retention and persistency. Each college will be hosting the Commit to Complete Day at HCC. The HCC Online College held its event yesterday, and a total of 362 online students signed the virtual form and submitted it, committing to complete their program of study here at HCC. We will be sharing more information as our remaining six colleges engage their current prospective students on their commitment to complete their certificate and/or degrees here at HCC. On the state level, the Texas Association of Community Colleges and the Texas Higher Education Coordinating Board have announced the Funding Futures Regional Summits. The summits will be taking place in four regions across the state. The summits will provide key information and collaborative opportunities to college leadership teams, offering focused time to strategize around the funding reforms to serve their communities maximally. Houston Community College has been extended an invitation to host the Funding Futures Regional Summit on January 9th and 10th, right here at 3100 Main. We are expecting 130 attendees. Each college within the Gulf Coast region is invited to bring a team of up to six people. The Gulf Coast region colleges include Lee College, Galveston College, San Jacinto College, Brazosport College, College of the Mainland, and Wharton County Junior College. We look forward to welcoming the Texas Association of Community Colleges, the Coordinating Board, and our neighboring colleges in January. I would like to congratulate two outstanding administrators who have been appointed to key leadership positions here at HCC. So as I call the names of the two individuals, I'd like for you to please stand and be recognized. Dr. Andrea Burge is now the Vice Chancellor of Strategy, Planning, and Institutional Effectiveness, and Mr. Timothy Ramirez is now the Chief of HCC Police. Congratulations to both. These roles are essential in working collaboratively with HCC teams to advance the vision and mission of the institution and with our local community leaders and businesses and industry partners as well. I would also like to take a moment to acknowledge Dr. Izzy Anderson. Dr. Anderson is the Vice Chancellor of Talent Engagement and Chief Human Resources Office. She will be returning to her passion for law. Dr. Anderson's leadership and contributions to HCC will be missed. Dr. Anderson, thank you for your service. The months of September and October have been filled with excitement as we engaged the community internally and externally with various activities and events. I will just highlight a few to include our convocation on September 20th. The theme was Going to the Moon, and the event was well-attended and, of course, quite successful. On October 3rd, the Alumni Association held its first networking social. Over 400 alums attended. Relaunching the Alumni Association at HCC was one of my high priorities last year, and I am grateful to Dr. Ramil Young and Mr. James Mabel for making the vision a reality. Thank you so very, very much. On Friday, October 11th, I had the opportunity to participate in Genesis Works Fire Side Chat, along with Mr. Steve Kane, President and CEO of the Greater Houston Partnership. The Fire Side Chat was focused on providing choice-filled pathways for youth in marginalized communities with the growing demands of Houston's dynamic industries. I would like to thank the President of Genesis I would like to thank the President of Genesis Works for her support and leadership in making this Fire Side Chat a reality for us, to showcase what we do here at HCC. Finally, we are preparing for our State of the College on November 1st at the Hilton Americas. We are inviting business and industry partners to join us. The event will begin at 8:30 AM with registration. It will start promptly at 9 o'clock AM. And if you are interested in additional information, I invite you to please visit the HCC website at hcc.edu backslash State of the College for more information. And so now, at this time, I would like to invite the 2024-25 United Student Council President, Jonah Garcia, USC President, to present the USC Report. Mr. Garcia.
Thank you for the warm introduction, Madam Chancellor. Good afternoon, Madam Chair, Board of Trustees, Madam Chancellor Ford Fisher, and respected faculty and staff. My name is Jonah Garcia, and I serve as the President of the United Student Council, and I'm so excited for the upcoming month and to share what my fellow officers and I did during the month of September and upcoming events for October. Today, I will be speaking on the following items such as Civic Engagement National Border Registration Day, the Computer Science Association Kickoff Event, the Breast Cancer Walk with Susan G. Komen, and the USC General Assembly Hybrid Accommodation. On September 17th, we had our back-to-back National Border Registration and Constitution Day, where each board member represented USC at their own respected college campus. During the event, we had a presentation on why it's important to vote and make your voice be heard. We gave away promo items such as Constitution pamphlets, stickers, and free shirts to all the students who attended. We encouraged students to register to vote, check their voter status, and we hosted a presidential debate watch party. Also, we partnered with voting organizations to motivate students to register to vote. On September, I'm sorry, on October 2nd, the United Student Council participated in the Computer Science Association CSA Kickoff Event, representing USC in support for the Computer Science Association. During the event, we helped students to check in, and we gave them a CSA shirt. The CSA introduced their new Executive Board Officers for the academic school year. We had the opportunity to network and build connections. The attendance in total was around 25 students, including CSA Advisor Samir Saver and the current CSA Executive Board Members Muskan Shah Asad and Jonah Phillips and Julia Bernard and former USC President Igor Loujic and former SGA Officer Clark Horak. Igor and Clark are both continuing their education in artificial intelligence at the University of Houston Main Campus. On October 5th, we partnered with all the HCC colleges to participate in the annual Breast Cancer Walk at the Susan G. Komen Race for the Cure 5K. We had a representation from USC, SGA, Student Life, students, and their families. The attendance in total was 120 participants, and our mission was to raise awareness and to celebrate cancer survivors such as my wonderful Student Life Coordinator slash SGA Advisor at Southeast, Ms. Amanda Garza. Additionally, we hope to provide support for those currently on their cancer journey and also to honor our loved ones who've lost the breast cancer battle. Finally, our next USC General Assembly will be held October 18th. One of our goals is to hold our General Assembly Meetings Hybrid to accommodate SGA officers, students from the online and Komen College, and students who have other commitments and need to join online. This concludes my report for the United Student Council. Madam Chair, Board of Trustees, and Madam Chancellor Ford Fisher, we thank you for your support and for inspiring us to be better leaders every day. Thank you, and I yield the floor back to you, Madam Chair.
Thank you very much, Mr. Garcia. Thank you so very, very much for your leadership. Excellent report.
Thank you so much, Madam Chancellor.
Thank you. Now, I would like to invite Dr. Nicole Bute Yangeloma, our Faculty Senate President, to the podium to present the Faculty Senate Report. Dr. Yangeloma.
Good afternoon, everyone. I don't know if I can follow that. That was amazing. Greetings, members of the board and Madam Chancellor. I hope each of you is well today. As you know, the Faculty Senate Report provides insights into activities in which faculty engage throughout the academic year. It is an honor to be able to represent such an engaged group of peers who work towards excellence and engagement in education, the HCC faculty. First, in the report, bless you. The Faculty Senate is comprised of 89 people, who then constitute the membership of 10 committees, such as Compensation, Polices and Procedures, Educational Affairs, and Student Success. To date, each of those 10 committees have been given their respective charges and is actively engaged towards accomplishing their goals for the year. Second, I would be remiss if I did not mention the Better Check Arman Auction, which is scheduled for November 1st, starting at 5:30 PM in Nigent 9 at our West Houston Institute location. This year's fun theme is Gothic Nights, so wear your best goth outfits. Each of you is invited. Your invitations will arrive through Board Services. We truly hope to see you there. I thank you for your time, your attention, and your support of my esteemed faculty colleagues.
Thank you also, Dr. Bute Yangeloma, and for your leadership as well. We appreciate you. And now, at this time, I'd like to invite Mr. Aaron Henry to the podium to present the Staff Senate Report. Mr. Henry is the President of the Staff Senate. Mr. Henry.
Good afternoon, trustees, chair, HCC community. First, happy birthday to each of our trustees. They have a birthday this month. Also, I'll offer my condolences to you, Chair Linton Gary. Also, I want to begin this evening recognizing a community member who has been chaired by the board, Judge Zinnia Burney, proudly stoning him from District 4, in which I reside. Passed away recently, and we celebrated her life last week at the Shrine of the Black Madonna. Her story is a powerful one, as it reminds me actually of our mission here at Houston Community College every single day, and it reminds me of how serious the work we do at this college. The Staff Senate hosted our first meeting of this year with the Talent Engagement Group sharing with us last month in September, responding to concerns that staff raised about the new compensation. I am related to report that the concerns that staff had regarding the new compensation model have ceased, and I've had no additional requests or items of our reports from any staff members around that. So we want to thank the Talent Engagement Team for their willingness to respond and to our chancellor for ensuring full transparency will be given, as it was definitely given. It is this sort of meaningful collaboration that helps to build the morale of the staff here at our institution. Trustees, the Senate year is a year, has a year of engaging activities, I'm sorry, and a lot of goals that we seek to accomplish, and I'll share a brief overview of some of them. We want to host a retreat. We would like to expand professional development opportunities for staff across the system to include things such as work-life balance, networking success, campus safety trainings around active shooter, and many more. There's also an effort to work with the administration to create and enhance a comprehensive training series for all staff regarding jobs. Staff have a huge concern about cross-departmental awareness, where students and community members can get support from anyone, anywhere in the college system. Also, I'm related to report about the work of our Student Success Committee. Committee from our Senate, they're eager to present recommendations to help solve concerns around enrollment retention and completion. The team of staff will expand to include more staff from across the system. They have shared concerns around onboarding and are fact-finding to present recommendations to our college administration. The staff are eager to work with every college in our system so that we can ensure a minimum of 70,000 students in our college system next year. It's possible, and we can do it. We can make sure that each college gets 10,000. The Senate is establishing a campaign with our HCC Foundation to raise funds for staff members. They are launching a $19.71 campaign that's significant to the founding of our college, which will allow staff and everyone who would like to donate to the foundation with a goal of raising funds for staff who perhaps fall on hard times. Also, to increase morale and employee significance, the Senate will begin a tour around the college with various socials, thanking staff for their hard work, while also creating an opportunity for us to hear from staff ways we can improve things here at our college. We want to hear the innovative solutions that we need in order to make HCC reach her goal. And then lastly, the Senate, starting in the month of December, will begin recognizing a staff member for their contributions to the college, particularly supporting all of our strategic goals. And that concludes my report to you. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Henry, and for your leadership also. All reports are excellent, and you're doing a magnificent job, so thank you all. And now, at this time, I would like to invite Dr. Michael Edwards, President of the Northeast College, to the podium to highlight the work on credentials of value. Dr. Edwards.
Thank you, Chancellor. Mariana Salinas. Mariana started the paramedic program September of 2023. She presently works for the City of South Houston and the Harris County Emergency Corps as a first responder on her medic unit. Mariana is very driven and motivated. In addition, she's excited about the opportunity to pursue her career as a medic and has a goal of becoming a flight nurse. When asked what she likes most about HCC, she responded by saying, "The EMS instructors are very passionate, and she loves learning the skills in person." Why HCC? She responded by saying, "My coworkers told me about HCC's paramedic program, and that HCC is the way to go." Here's her story.
I've always wanted to be in the medical field, and you know, I grew up with not a lot of emergency services, and you know, I've always drawn to ambulances, being a first responder, that adrenaline. And I went to HCC because of their reputation, their high pass rates. I thought this was the school for me. I felt like everywhere I asked, you know, what school should I go to? They're like, "HCC, HCC." And you know, every medic that I met that graduated from this school is doing extremely well out in the field, and I wanted that for myself as well. Here, you do a lot of hands-on, which I really like. I'm a hands-on person. They provide a lot of activities where I can do my skills. They get instructors from a lot of different departments that, you know, precept me, and you know, they tell me, you know, you should work on this and that. I have instructors who are very passionate about everything. They always provide tutoring, which I really like. They're always open to, you know, questions, staying after, you know, providing instructors to be there for you. They provide clinical experiences, not just what we need to graduate, but even more than that. We go to pediatric operations room to do intubations and stuff. It's more hands-on, and you know, it helps me learn. Before we go into any clinical, we have the Skills Day where we get tested on skills that, you know, that could show up or potentially show up on calls. They test us out to make sure that we are fully prepared to be out in the field and, you know, work with real-life patients. I feel prepared for my capstone. We ran calls. It was random, which was nice, because that is how it is on the field. You know, they put us with random patients. They helped us feel ready for the real-life patients and calls. I received a $1,000 scholarship from the Houston Rodeo Livestock. That really helped me and my family. Paramedic school, it's a lot of hours, a lot of dedication and sacrifice, and you know, it helped take the weight off of my parents and for me to work less and, you know, dedicate myself more to this program and my future. I've always wanted to be in the medical field. I want to stay in the medical field. Hopefully, once I graduate paramedic school, I want to move on to nursing, and from nursing, I want to be a flight nurse. I want to stay in the first responder area. Adrenaline, I love it. It's my passion, and I love helping people in an emergency setting, so that's what I want to do. They don't let you make a mistake, and you know, that's what you don't want to make out in the field. They prepare you for real-life scenarios, real-life people, real-life patients. They don't let mistakes slide, which is what you want coming from in a first responder school. People will teach you how to be in very chaotic scenes. You get all the mistakes out here, so you're good out in the field, and that's what I want in paramedic school, for them to catch my mistakes and teaching me how to be a confident medic.
Excellent.
Trustees, Chancellor, I believe Ms. Salinas is with us this evening.
Okay, Ms. Salinas, if you would come down front with Dr. Edwards. If you would stand in front, and the trustees can stand from here to congratulate you. Congratulations to you. So proud of you. Dr. Edwards, please come down to join. Mariana, congratulations, indeed. So proud of you. Yes, indeed.
Yes, we are.
Not in front of the trustees.
It'll shine in my eyes.
Great. Thank you so very, very much.
Congratulations.
A citizen desiring to appear before the Board of Trustees shall complete the application for hearing 24 hours prior to the meeting and file said application with the Board Services Office. There are no citizens signed up to speak before the board today. We are now ready to consider the consent agenda. Please note that Item 5, Proposed Board Bylaws Revisions to Article F, Section 1, will be pulled from the consent agenda. Are there any other items to be pulled from the consent agenda and set aside for discussion? Okay. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Madam Chair, I were intending to run on the next meeting, not pulling to discuss.
No, I didn't say pull to discuss. I just said pulled.
Okay. I just didn't want to confuse with...
Right.
Yeah, to be clear, as I understand it, the intention is to pull that item both from the consent agenda and then from the agenda to bring it back at a later time. Got what you need?
Okay. Well, is there a motion to approve?
It's a motion.
Is that second?
Second.
It has been moved to second. We will now vote.
Voting has concluded. The item passed with a vote of seven to zero.
Madam Chair, if I could have a quick moment of privilege? I'm very excited that we just approved the chancellor's annual priorities and performance goals. And we've had a couple of really meaningful discussions as a board on that. Now that that has been passed, I would request that we publish that to the public as soon, as soon as we can. Not only is it a contract between the board and the chancellor, but it's also a contract between this institution and the public. And I think it'd be valuable for them to understand what we as an institution are holding ourselves accountable to achieve on their behalf.
Thank you so much for that comment. We will now move to Item A, Public Hearing Regarding Tax Revenue Calculations and Vote to Approve 2024 Tax Rates for Maintenance and Operations. The board has allotted this time as the public hearing for taxpayers to express their views on the tax revenue increase. Are there any citizens present who would like to speak before the board regarding the tax revenue calculations and the vote to approve 2024 tax rates for maintenance? The no new revenue and voter-approved tax rates are posted on the HCC website and has been posted since August 7th, 2024 in order to comply with the Truth in Taxation Property Tax Code, Chapter 26. The proposed tax rate for tax year... The proposed tax rate for tax year 2024 is .096182 cents. The proposed tax rate is 4.28% greater than last year's 2023 tax rate, and it's greater than the calculated 2024 No New Revenue Tax Rate of .090364 cents, and does not exceed the voter-approved rate of .096967 cents. Since the total tax rate proposed exceeded the calculated No New Revenue rate for 2024, a public hearing was required under Chapter 26 of the Property Tax Code. This is a report item. No action is required. Is there a motion to approve Item B?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
It has been moved in second. Board Counsel Melissa Maholic will introduce the item.
Okay, this is a procedural item. Because the tax rate came before the Board at a previous meeting and was, there was a vote and it was not adopted, Roberts Rules requires that we bring a motion to renew in order for the Board to consider the item again. So the subsequent, the next item on the agenda, Item C, will be the tax rate, but before the Board can consider that item, the Board needs to vote and approve this item. So if this item is not approved, we can't consider Item C.
Thanks for that explanation, Melissa. Trustees, any questions?
Excuse me, don't be confused. I asked Trustee Davies to pick up the meeting, because my voice, my throat is really hurting. So that's why he's jumped in there. Okay. It's there.
Okay, we're ready to vote.
The motion passed with a vote of seven to zero.
All right. Thanks, Sharon. We will not...
One question. Did that take five or six for the renewal? Thanks.
Thank you. All right. We'll now consider Item C, Adopt the 2024 Tax Rate for Maintenance and Operations. I am going to make the motion and move that the property tax rate be increased by the adoption of a tax rate of 0.096182 cents, which is effectively a 6.44% increase in the total tax rate, and includes a maintenance and operations tax rate of 0.081632 cents per $100 in the said valuation, which is effectively a 6.97% increase compared to the No New Revenue Maintenance and Operations Tax Rate of 0.076312 cents. Is there a second?
Oh, didn't come up.
All right. I hear a second. It's been moved in second. Before I have Dr. Ford Fisher introduce the item, actually, I'll come back to that after Dr. Ford Fisher introduces the item.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair, members of the Board. This item is presented to request your approval to adopt the 2024 Tax Rate for Maintenance and Operations, and with your permission, Mr. Vice Chair, interim Vice Chancellor Jacob Ackon will come to the podium to provide an overview and answer to the questions that will be raised.
Thank you, Madam Chancellor, Madam Chair, members of the Board. Good evening. It's good to be with you this, this beautiful day. We will go through this presentation very quickly as we've reviewed this information a number of times during the past two months. As a reminder, the proposed rate is the necessary rate in order to support the budget passed on June 26 of $224 million derived from ad valorem taxes. The meeting today, in terms of timeline, is almost the last chance that we have to adopt this rate. Technically, we can go out to October 18th if, for some reason, we need to do so, but any delays beyond this point will require additional expense to the institution as the taxing authorities will issue notices to taxpayers, and any delays beyond today would require reissuing those at a cost of $30,000 to the institution. As you can see here in this graph, the tax base in Houston has grown steadily over the past 10 years, at an average rate of increase at 6%. However, that growth has been fairly sporadic year over year. By comparison, our tax rate that we charge our citizens has been relatively flat with declines the last several years due to the exceptional growth in the tax base, and what we're proposing this year is a recoup of some of the cuts that were required last year and the year prior to that.
Mr. Ackon, before moving forward on that, what was the tax rate for fiscal year 2022?
So the tax rate for fiscal year 2022 was .0991.
And for fiscal year 2021?
.1003.
So we had a decline from '21 to '22, and then what happened from '22 up until now?
So the decline from '21 to '22, '22 to '23, and '23 to '24 were all required under statute as the tax base was growing faster than the total increase of revenue of 8% would allow without requiring a general populous vote for an increase.
If I'm reading the chart correctly, we had dropped our tax rate for MNO considerably since 2021 to bring us to the valley, if you will, of .0922 for fiscal year '24, so we're just kind of recouping, we're restabilizing the rate back upwards, essentially.
Yes, that is correct.
Thanks.
So as you can see here, the tax valuations, $284.9 billion with an MNO rate of .081632, will generate the $224 million that we need to support the budget passed in June of this One other item that I will mention simply for comparison purposes, the average tax rate, weighted average tax rate across the entire state of Texas for community colleges is .1605. At the proposed rate, we would still be 40% lower than the average rate. We are also the sixth lowest tax rate of any institution in the state of Texas, and by far the lowest when compared to other large urban community colleges. With that, I would take any questions or comments.
Chair.
Yes. Trustee Vanderbilt Starw.
Thank you for the clarification about being the lowest tax rate. How do we compare in terms of county to county, tax, ad valorem tax increases? What I want to know is how did those other counties grow in comparison to Harris County, where those other community colleges are?
So I don't have those details readily in front of me, but I can give you the highlights. So you'll notice that Dallas College cut their rate by 4%. They had a 12% increase in their tax base this year, and so the pattern that we're following is pretty comparable to our peers. As the tax rates grow beyond our ability to capture the 8%, we cut our rates. The others who had no increases saw larger increases, 4% to 6% in their tax bases, and so they're not struggling with the same issue that we have in terms of growth for the last two years, and then only a marginal 1.5% growth this year.
Mr. Vice Chair, what happens if this doesn't pass? Does it revert to the rate that we have currently?
No. So if the rate is not passed, without an amending motion, we would default to the No New Revenue rate. In other words, we wouldn't be able to collect more revenue this year than we collected last year. Because of the 1.5% increase in our tax base, that means we would actually be cutting our rate even further to the .0902 rate in order to collect only the revenue that we collected last year.
Thank you.
Trustees, questions?
If I can just, on this particular chart that you've shown us, just so that we're all clear, the tax rate we're proposing is .096192. The closest peers to peer institutions, if you will, what's the rate for Lone Star and San Jacinto?
So San Jacinto College is .154868, and Lone Star College is .107600. Just a matter of observation, if our rate were the same rate as San Jacinto, we could offer free education to every single student who would like to attend college at HCC and still generate more revenue in ad valorem taxes than we do currently with ad valorem taxes and tuition revenue combined.
And thank you for that observation. Chancellor, when does Hold Harmless expire?
Certainly. Hold Harmless will end at the end of August 2025, and so we will be operating on a self-sustaining budget, beginning with classes that start the end of August for the remainder of the continuation of House Bill 8 in the way we are currently funded based upon performance outcomes. So in fact, we are now six months away from having the schedule open for students to register for Fall 2025. And so all of the planning that we do now will prepare us to outreach to the community, to complete our schedules, to make sure that we enroll students, that we make sure that we have the plans in place to retain our students and to complete them, and we're working now on, as I mentioned in the earlier presentation, the commit to complete, to ensure that we can get the commitments from students, that they are planning to complete their credentials here at HCC. So Hold Harmless ends in August 2025.
Trustees, any other questions?
Okay. Here are none. I believe we're now ready to vote. Yes. We will now vote on Item C, To Adopt the 2024 Total Tax Rate for Maintenance and Operations. This is a record vote, so Sharon...
So disregard the vote, and I will call the record to receive your vote. I do apologize. Dr. Linton Gary? Trustee Davies?
Yes.
Trustee Wilson?
Yes. Yes.
Trustee Cheeben?
Yes.
Trustee Johnson?
Yes.
Trustee Loretto is not present. Trustee Reichardt?
No.
Trustee Tomas is not present. Dr. Vanderbilt Starworth, received. The item passed with a vote of six in favor, one opposing.
Thank you all, trustees, for helping us fulfill that obligation and responsibility. Yes. Trustee Wilson.
I am personally glad that this did pass, because I would hate to have to undergo the task of balancing, reworking our budget to balance it to what our tax rate is and the pain that it might cause in not having us to give the 7% tax increase that we voted, but since it has passed, we're free and clear of that, and we're going to move forward, and I'm happy for this vote.
Thank you, Trustee Wilson. Any other comments, Chancellor?
Well, I would like to also, on behalf of the faculty, staff, the students that we currently have, and the students that will become our students who are now prospective students, to thank you also, members of the Board, for your support. We are very serious about the work that we're doing, and we are very committed to this work. We will continue to go to every single community within our service area, all nine trustee districts, to ensure that we're able to outreach to the communities, to the students, to let them know about the opportunities that HCC provides for them to get the educational attainment that will allow them to enter good jobs with livable waves. So I thank you so very, very much for that. We are committed to the work, and we appreciate your support.
All right. Thank you all. All right, we could breeze through the rest of the meeting. Is there a motion to approve Item D, Personnel Agenda for Faculty?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved in seconded. Dr. Ford Fisher will introduce the item.
Thank you very much, Mr. Vice Chair, members of the Board. This item presents the Personnel Agenda for October 2024 for your review and approval, and with your permission, Mr. Vice Chair, Dr. Izzy Anderson, Vice Chancellor, NCHRO, will present an overview and address all questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Chancellor.
Dr. Anderson?
Chair, trustees, thank you. We bring for your review and recommend your approval for the listed faculty in the package so that the administration can execute an employment contract.
Any questions, trustees? All right.
Thank you, Dr. Anderson. We will now vote on Item D, Personnel Agenda. Voting is now open.
Yes for me, Sharon.
Received. Voting has concluded. The motion passed with a vote of seven to zero.
Thank you. Next, we have Item E. Is there a motion to approve Item E, Letter of Nomination Supporting Appointment to Association of Community College Trustees, ACCT 2025 Appointed Committees?
So moved. Second.
It's been moved in seconded. Is there any discussion regarding the item?
I do have a question for, for Board Services. These are for the committees, but this is not for the executive committee?
No, these are for the appointment of the committees that are listed in the, under the, compelling reason there are four committees that we are able to, the trustees are able to apply for.
This is, this is a good opportunity for our trustees to be part of these committees. These are volunteer opportunities, but it is also an opportunity to affect change at the national level, so I'm glad to see my two trustees that have agreed to serve.
Thank you. All right. Any other questions?
Here are none. We will now vote on Item E.
Yes. May Sharon.
Received. Voting has concluded. The motion passed with a vote of seven to zero.
Sharon, is there a motion...
Is there a conflict of interest for the people?
I didn't hear that, I'm sure. Is there a motion to approve Item F, to ratify approval of resolution in memoriam of Judge Zeneta Burney?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
It has been moved and seconded. Trustees, any discussions, comments, reflections? Trustee Vanderbilt Starworth?
You know, I have to appreciate Judge Berniket, because my relationship with her goes back to 1989. She was, she took me under her wing in 1989, and I learned under her mentorship. I also like to say that her daughter is now current judge of that same court. She stated that she would like to return, I think HCC gave her a clock, a memorial clock. She would like to return that clock to the college, because she said that she thought that it was important that the clock be returned to us, because we honored her mother, and she appreciated that, and she wanted that clock to be part of our memorial gift, so she will be returning that. But it is, it was, it's very tough to lose Judge Bernie. She was a civil rights fighter, if any of you really knew her. She was a five, four, four-foot-ten-inch warrior. She was extraordinary at civil rights, and it was a blessing to have her as one of our judges in our district, so I'm going to miss my friend. I'm losing too many friends, but I am going to miss...
Thank you, Trustee Vanderbilt. Thank you, Trustee Vannable Starworth. Any other comments?
I'll just add, you know, Judge Burney was truly a trailblazer as a lawyer, as in my recollection is that she and three other African-American females started the first law firm in the state of Texas, I believe, run by African-American women. So she was pioneering in that sense. She was a mentor to so many. I mean, the services that were held for her, people, you know, almost were being turned away, just people with their outpouring of love and support for her family, for the many lives that she impacted, for the legacy that she's laid that will stand for a very long time within our community and our midst. So I'll end my comments there, and if there are no further comments, we'll now vote on item F.
Yes for me, Sharon.
Received. The motion passed with a vote of seven to zero.
Thank you, Sharon. Is there a motion to approve item G, the Texas Association of Community Colleges' annual membership for 2024-2025?
A moved.
There's second?
Second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. Dr. Ford Fisher will introduce the item.
Thank you very much, Mr. Vice Chair, members of the board. This item is presented for your approval of the annual membership dues to the Texas Association of Community Colleges for 2024-2025. We've found the TACC to be a great advocate for community colleges at the state level and a friend to our college. In fact, in addition to the benefits of association, TAC is closely attuned to the coordinating board and the legislature and all policy matters pertaining to House Bill 8. We are so delighted to be members. I am a member of Tax Committee on Strategic Planning and a member, along with Dr. Young, on Tax Legislative Committee. In January, HCC, as I mentioned earlier, will host TAC in a two-day meeting here at 3100 Main, with over 130 presidents, chancellors, and members of their teams attending from throughout the region. Prior to beginning of the legislative session, they will be here. And as I mentioned, they are a great advocate for us, and we recommend to the board consideration for the approval of the membership dues. Thank you.
Thank you, Chancellor Ford Fisher. Any comments, questions? Trustee Wilson?
I realize that they do advocate for us, and we've got our team, and we work our state senators and our state reps pretty good. I just wonder if we get $103,000 worth of value out of that relationship.
I think we do. I think we do because they have been keeping us informed on a regular basis about HB8. They also send us regular updates, and that positions us well in order to be able to serve our students. They are frequently providing us with information about all of the high-demand occupations. They send us regular updates on quite a frequent basis with respect to any changes and discussions with the legislature, and they keep us involved. I think one of the things that we see with one of the larger community colleges that is not involved, they are not getting the same information that we are getting. So I would think that, given the difference, we were paying as an institution $93,000 previously, it's a $10,000 increase, and I think it's well worth it.
Trustee Vannable Starworth?
I also like to say that CAT, our Community College Association of Texas Trustees, works in partnership with TAC, especially for the legislative HB8. We, for this legislative committee, we are not required to work together, but we do to make sure that this new funding formula is appropriately managed and effectively changed for the betterment of the community colleges. And it does require both entities to work in partnered agreement. And so I really appreciate CAT being at the table with CAT so that we could work as a team to make sure that all community colleges in the state of Texas, I think there are 54, to make sure that all 54 community colleges in the state are being adequately funded for this fiscal year. This was a, this was a very tricky, this was a very tricky House Bill for us to actually come to the table with, and we had to work together to make this happen, and we'll have to continue to work together to keep it afloat, to make sure that we are getting the best bang for our buck, and to make sure that TAC and CAT remain in partnered agreement so that we can continue our upward mobility. So yes.
Thank you, Trustee Vannable Starworth. Chancellor, you wanted to respond?
Thank you so very, very much. I do want to make one additional comment about the executive director, Ray Martinez, Dr. Martinez. He has been here to help advise us as well. Early in September, he was here, but in addition to that, he worked at the coordinating board, and he has great relationships with the members of the coordinating board. He understands the rules, the protocols, the procedures as well. And with the new interim lead commissioner for the coordinating board, he has worked very closely with her as well. There was a lot of concern among the community college presidents and chancellors when the former commissioner Keller left to go to a university, and they thought that the community colleges would certainly be at risk because House Bill 8 was really under his leadership. And the new person who is the interim worked closely with him, and so had Dr. Martinez. And so that really provides us not only with the information in a timely manner, but the connections also directly to the coordinating board to keep us well informed as well about some of the changes, what we need to be aware of, and what we need to do in order to provide the information needed for both organizations in a timely manner. Thank you.
Thank you, Chancellor. Trustee Ward Johnson?
On the leadership training, is the training just for trustees, or does it have training for staff as well?
Are you mentioning, are you making reference to CAT or to TAC? Sure. So with TAC, it's the presidents that will be coming here, the chancellors, and their selected members of their teams, which could very well include the staff as well as some of their trustees who might want to attend also.
It says it provides leadership training, and then we pay for the training.
Are you referencing the training that will be here?
No, I'm talking about the, as part of this membership, it says it provides leadership training.
Sure.
But then we pay to send them to the training.
The training that we have gone to, we do pay a fee to go there, but it's a very modest rate, and we go there, and the training is really leading edge with them. And one of the sessions that was attended recently focused on artificial intelligence, and there were speakers that were from throughout the state and, of course, from out of state as well, that provided us with substantial information that I found to be very beneficial and helpful to us.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, here are none. We'll now vote on item G. Voting is now open.
Yes. Yes, Sharon.
Received. The motion passed with a vote of six to one.
The board will now adjourn to a closed executive session under the Texas Government Code, Sections 551.071, 551.072, 551.074, and/or 551.076 of the Open Meetings Act that stated in the notice of this meeting. Should any final action, vote, or decision be required in opinion of the board on any matters concerning closed session, such final action or decision shall be taken up in the open meeting or a subsequent public meeting of the board upon notice thereof. The meeting is hereby adjourned to executive session at...
5:42 PM.
For those trustees joining closed session by video conference, please be reminded to disconnect from the opening session. A portion of the meeting is joined closed session with the WebEx link provided for closed session.[1228.71]
For those trustees joining closed session by video conference, please be reminded to disconnect from the opening session. A portion of the meeting and join closed session with the WebEx link provided for closed session.
...
This meeting of the Board of Trustees of the Houston Community College System is now reconvened at?
6:53 PM.
Okay, it's their motion to approve item H, consideration of a proposed settlement regarding United States District Court, Southern District of Texas, Houston Division, Civil Case Number 420-CV-02186, Brown v. HCC system et al.
The motion is to authorize the administration to negotiate settlement as discussed in closed session.
They're second? Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any discussion regarding the item? Alright, we'll now vote on item H.
Voting has concluded. The motion passed with a vote of 6 to 1.
Meeting is hereby adjourned at?
6:54 PM.
Alright, have a good evening everyone, happy Halloween and all that fun stuff. For Halloween?
Happy birthday.
Oh, I thought for Halloween, I'm dressing as Dave Wilson is what I was gonna say.